Just tell me when you're ready.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Mobile City Council Finance Committee, and it is 2:00 PM on Tuesday, August 25th. This meeting is to review the proposed fiscal year 2021, excuse me, fiscal year 21 budget, which has been submitted to the council by Mayor Stimson. And this is a work session for the council. We will, council members will first listen to a presentation on the budget by Mr. Wesh, the Finance Director, and then I will ask any council members who wish, starting with the members of the committee, to see if they have any questions. In addition to myself, Joel Davis as chairman, the other members of the committee are Councilman Fred Richardson and Councilman John Williams, both of whom are with us today. We also have Councilwoman Beth Rich and Councilman CJ Small. We have the Finance Director and members of his staff. We have the city's subject senior, the council's attorney. We have representatives from the county, from the city legal staff. And we have the clerk and the assistant clerk of the city with us all. So I would ask, as a matter of courtesy, if you're not talking, please mute yourself. I can already hear some background noise. And so again, if you're not going to be speaking, please mute yourself. And I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Wesh for his opening presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I'd first like to say to you and to council members Williams, Richardson, Rich, and Small, thank you for making time this afternoon to talk about the budget. I appreciate your attendance, especially during this special time of having to address city needs in a different way with this Zoom and with having to use other electronic means to access the information that we're going to share with you. I would like to make some general comments about 2021 and then ask staff to go through the PowerPoint presentation. And then, as you stated, we would like to answer any questions or certainly take any questions that you have today, try to answer them, and to the extent that we cannot, to take those and answer them over the next few days. You know, Mr. Chairman, this is probably the most interesting financial exercise that our team has engaged in in the last seven years. When the pandemic began, we started searching around for larger cities and larger states that might have better models than what we could come up with to project the effects, the financial effects of the pandemic during the remainder of 2020, and then to use that as a foundation to anticipate what 2021 would look like. What we found, though, was those larger cities and larger states really had no meaningful experience in this either. They had no models. We relied initially on the comptroller of the state of New York, thinking that his model was probably well researched and, you know, better than anything we could come up with on our own. And, you know, through no fault of theirs, their model was inadequate to the task. And we looked at other cities. They were not consistent with each other and proved not to be reliable either. So in the absence of a model, we had to wait for actual data to arrive, and that allowed us to go forward with projecting 2020 and then 2021. We found that there were some things special to Mobile. So in looking inward, we discovered that our old-school businesses, industry, manufacturing, have proved to be more resilient than some of the new-age businesses, technology-leveraged enterprises. Other than a few contract workers, our two large manufacturing employers, Airbus and Hostel, have not laid off any employees and have proved to be very resilient in the face of, you know, the unknown. Our service businesses have suffered, as they have everywhere, hospitality, restaurants, bars, entertainment. But the balance of our industry has proven to be up to the challenge. You may be familiar with the federal warrant notices that must go out to a city and a county if a business with more than 50 employees is anticipating closing. We've only had two of those in the last six months of the pandemic, and one of those was actually a holdover from the old GAF plant that we've received a series of warrant notices from over the last three years. So really, we have not lost major businesses. We've had only one restaurant actually announce that they're closing in the downtown area, the area that we see most often. A few have not opened back up yet. They're keeping their powder dry. But we've had remarkably few businesses who've given up the ghost. So I think Mobile has weathered the storm a little bit better than others. And we're hopeful, looking forward to 2021, that we'll weather whatever storms come our way, whether they be second or third waves or whether it may be a national recession that reaches down and affects us. But for the time being, we're anticipating a bright future. It's not that way for all. We have looked at our peer cities. You have probably seen this as well. Birmingham is, has just presented its budget. They are going to be reducing their overall budget by 20%. They had a $63 million loss from COVID that occurred in the last six months of 20, their 2020, which ended June 30th, which is hugely significant. They are having large layoffs, furloughs, and salary reductions citywide. Their performance contracts and other discretionary allocations have been slashed, and they are feeling the pinch. One of the things that Birmingham has relied upon for a number of years is an occupational tax. And while that proved to be of benefit during those years, as people start to telework, they're not paying that occupational tax. They are staying home in their home cities and not going to work in Birmingham, and that is causing a great deal of pain there. We thankfully do not have those pressures or certainly don't have them to the same degree that Birmingham does. Montgomery is going to decrease its 2021 budget by 6.9% under its 2020 budget, and that's going to be painful for them, too. Tuscaloosa is factoring in a $15 million decrease in their general fund budget for 2021 from 2020. And while we have not looked at Auburn, we're anticipating that Auburn's going to feel that same type of pressure from having fewer students on campus and fewer events such as football games and other athletic endeavors. On the other hand, we are, as you have seen in our budget, looking at about a 3.2% increase in 2021 that's achievable largely because of increased sales taxes and SSUT receipts. And we'll get into that a little bit later. We've also been able to project no furloughs, no layoffs for the city of Mobile. We have budgeted a 2.5% across-the-board raise for our city employees. We'll monitor our future as we go. We'll see what happens during the last six weeks of the current fiscal year and probably into the first couple of months of 2021 to actually institute that raise. But right now, we are projecting enough in the way of revenues to achieve that. We're not going to take a pause in the paydown of debt or unfunded liabilities. They will go on as normal, and the capital budget is not only intact, but will have a sizable increase from the ability to take into account a carryover of surplus from 2019. We had started talking at the edges about having the availability of surplus from 2019, which was a very positive year financially, to allocate to certain capital needs. But we held off while we were trying to figure out what COVID was going to do to us. Because that's just come to light, you know, in the last two months, really the last six weeks or so, we have put that into the 2021 budget as opposed to a standalone allocation to put before you for capital projects. I'd like to introduce our team. I'm not sure if you can see all of us on the screen. But they include Celia Saff, who is our Deputy Finance Director, and she is the drafter of the City of Mobile General Fund Budget. Relia Mallory, who is our Capital Projects Administrator and the architect of the Capital Budget and the Convention Center Budget. And Rebecca Christian, our comptroller, and she's the source for our financial information, the numbers and tools that we use to really serve as a foundation for the projections that we make that go into the budgets. So, Mr. Davis, if you have any questions at this point, I would be happy to entertain them. If not, I'd like to turn it over to our team to look at the PowerPoint that you have up.
Mr. Davis, you're on mute.
Are you on mute? Yep, okay, thank you. I think just go through the PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Wesh, and then we'll take questions afterwards.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. The format of the FY 2021 budget is similar to previous years. It is comprised of the General Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund, the Convention Center Fund, and it also includes select data for the Internal Service and Enterprise Funds, which are subsidized by the General Fund. The General Fund budget process is comprised of five levels. We start with cost center managers to submit their budgets to the Finance Department. We add those budgets up that are submitted. And if we're in a deficit situation, then we give the budgets back to the directors, and they make additional cuts, which is what happens every year. It next goes to Level 3, the finance level. And at that point, if it's still not balanced, meaning that revenues are less than expenses, we make additional cuts. This year, we cut select vacant positions, and we cut motor pool, the motor pool budget of the Police Department by $1 million in order to get the budget balanced. We cannot give the budget to the council unless it is balanced. Level 4 is the mayor's level, and he makes whatever adjustments he sees fit before we give it to council. At each level, the budget is entered into MUNIS so that on October 1st, we are ready to go with the new budget. This year, we did not have as many changes as we had last year to the structure of the budget. The Neighborhood Development and Municipal Enforcement moved from the mayor's section of the budget to the finance section. The Special Events moved from the finance to the Public Works, which is, it moved to Parks and Rec, which is under Public Works. A cost center was added for grants management and was put under finance. The Civic Affairs Cost Center was eliminated, and the final change was that the cemetery cost center, which is under Parks and Rec, was eliminated. And the funding that was allocated to this cost center was put into the performance contract for the Friends of Magnolia. Those were the changes. So if you're looking at comparing last year to this year, you need to know that those changes were made. As Mr. Wesh said, there's a 2.5% raise for all city employees included in this budget. Another important factor is that revenues have been projected using monthly actuals between July 2019 and June 2020. In those revenues, which will be discussed later, for room tax, we actually deducted $1 million because we knew that tax was going to decrease. Healthcare, our consultant has told us there will be no increase in healthcare costs anticipated in '21. And finally, motor pool continues to modernize the fleet, and we anticipate approximately $1.5 million over the 2020 budget that will be spent on acquisitions.
Okay, we're going to go through a few select items with significant year-over-year changes, starting with revenues and transfers in into the General Fund. For tax revenue in the General Fund, total taxes are proposed to increase 6%, $1.6 million. The most significant change of which is a 5.4% increase in sales tax in the city in PJ for a total of an increase of $8.3 million. SSUT is proposed to nearly double in the General Fund to increase by about $4.5 million. Now, this is due to changes in the allocation of SSUT to the city, but also due to a general increase in online sales. The room tax for the city, as Celia said, we took the actuals for that 12-month period of July to June, which would have resulted in about a $976,000 loss over prior-year budget, but then we reduced it further by another $1 million, just to be conservative, due to the downward pressures on this revenue stream from COVID-related issues. In the licenses and permits category, the bulk of the $1.3 million change is a budgeted increase of 3.5% or $1.3 million for city and PJ business licenses. This is just reflecting actual experiences in the 12 months that were monitored to develop the amount. Charges for services have really had a downward pressure on them during the COVID six months we've been under COVID. The engineering fees and parking fees, we believe, to largely be a result of COVID. Franchise fees, we have reduced them by the $635,000 year-over-year, and that's mainly due to less-than-anticipated actual receipts in this category from our various franchise fees. The transfers in in the General Fund are projected to decrease $3.9 million. The most significant change year-over-year is the elimination of the transfer in from the cruise terminal into the General Fund of $5 million. In fiscal '20, this was included in the budget because the cruise terminal had been profitable and had developed a significant reserve. And so those unrestricted funds through the budget process in 2020 were intended to be transferred into the General Fund to help subsidize General Fund. With the onset of COVID and the lack of cruises out of the cruise terminal, the significant revenue streams at the cruise terminal have virtually gone to zero. And so the reserves that were in the cruise terminal really have been used to maintain operations at the terminal during this period of time. So the summary changes for revenues and transfers in in the General Fund. The total revenues and transfers in, these were resources of funds, are projected to increase a total of $8.2 million for 3.2% increase. An additional source of inflows into the budget, though not a revenue, is the appropriation of prior-year General Fund reserve. So this is actually appropriating a portion of what was the 2019 ending fund balance in the General Fund. The total reserve increased $12.7 million over prior year. But as you can see, the transfer of capital of $13.2 million obviously amounts to this significant change. And we have a slide coming up on the projects that are estimated to be used for that $13 million. The annual carryover that would have been appropriated if there were not the $13 million to transfer to capital would actually have decreased over last year by half a million dollars. For expenditures and transfers out, they are projected to increase $8 million, most significantly a 2.3% increase into public safety. This mainly can be attributable to the budgeted raise for all city employees. And the largest change is the transfer out of $14.9 million, most significant of which in the transfers is the $13.2 million transfer to capital and changes in transfers to EMS and to the Civic Center. So now we arrive to essentially what amounts to the results of operations for fiscal year '20. Now, while these are projections, we have taken what the General Fund fund balance was at July 30th, 2020, which is $99.3 million. So if we had ended the fiscal year at July 31st, that's what our fund balance would have been. But we have to project our August and September activity to attempt to come to what we believe a conservative estimate of what General Fund fund balance will be at 9:30 for the purposes of the CAPR. So we have arrived at what we believe is a conservative number of $84.4 million in ending fund balance at 9:30, 20. If we roll that ending fund balance into beginning fund balance of fiscal '21, we can project, if all activity in the General Fund happens exactly according to the budgeted amounts we presented, we would arrive back at a $68.8 million fund balance at the end of September 2021. Now, obviously, nothing ever goes exactly as budgeted, but this is probably a fairly conservative estimate, given what we know now.
All right. I would now highlight some of the major areas in the proposed Capital Improvement Fund and the Convention Center Fund budget. You'll notice that we had a couple of decreases in the Capital Improvement Fund. $500,000 was due to the occupancy, what Rebecca and Celia both mentioned, room rates. So we reduced that by $500,000. Transfers from Convention Center Fund was also reduced by $271,000. That's the net effect of the $500,000 that was reduced in the budget, FY '21 budget in the Convention Center Fund budget, and some additional adjustments with some performance contracts. Capital expenses increased over all of $11.1376,298. The majority of that was the $13,195 that Rebecca mentioned earlier, which was a transfer from General Fund. The detail of that $13 million was, in the cultural area, Africa Town Micro Museum for $250,000. Gulf Quest Terminal Dock, $1.7 million. Gulf Quest Gangway, another $700,000, so it's a total of $2.4 million for Gulf Quest. Fire Training Center, $775,000. Vehicle supplement, we have $2.5 million to supplement the vehicles that we'll be purchasing during this year. The Greenway Trail, Section 1 and part of Section 2, not the entire Section 2, $1.2 million. We had $4.5 million in Parks and Rec. They were the Soccer Complex, $250,000. Tremere Park Football Stadium, $1 million. Memes Park Combo Theater, $1.4 million. Matthews Park, $950,000. And Langham Park Amphitheater, $970,000. The final piece of that $13.2 million was Nevis Road Extension, which is $1.5 million. The net effect of that expenses, we'll see, the $11.376, was we had a decrease in MUNIS, in the municipal system, of $1,094,000. That decrease is only for FY 2021 because we had accumulated some budget from previous years, and next year, we'll be back approximately to $2 million. So I wanted to make sure you knew that was the temporary decrease. And then we had a couple of other little items that are like engineering and traffic engineering, and they're not included in this budget, but we hope to put them into the allocation for the Alabama Municipal Trust Fund. Convention Center has a reduction of $500,000, as I mentioned, in the room tax, and which resulted in a straight $500,000 expense decrease. You'll also see that there was only a $271,000 reduction in transfers to the General Fund that I mentioned earlier. You'll notice how these interact. Pretty much, most of the things you see on this one, you're going to see the opposite side in the Capital Improvement Fund because they really work well together. So the room tax reduction was a $500,000, and then it was a net reduction in performance contracts of $229,300. That's what caused the $271,000 reduction in the transfers.
This final slide is something that you have seen before. It's simply broken down by color code as to the source of capital infrastructure outlays during the previous nine or so years and what's projected over the next nine or so years. You'll see that, beginning with 2015, but really energized in 2016 with CIP, that we have gone to really three major sources of revenue to finance what are tremendous amounts of infrastructure work over the past few years and that will be infrastructure work over the next few years. And those are composed of the CIP, the $21 million earmark, state and federal infrastructure grants. That's something that we really had not accessed as a city compared to 2015, but we are now accessing at an increasing rate. Some of that is Restore and Related VP Grant availability, but it also includes the Tiger Grant, $14 million that we're still working through now on Broad Street. The third is kind of interesting, and that is the county pay-as-you-go. While we had always, or most of the time, received a small amount of pay-as-you-go, over the last few years and we project into the future, we have prevailed upon the county to understand that half of the pay-as-you-go taxes that are produced each two-year program come from taxes that City of Mobile citizens pay on property that's located within the city limits. And so while we're not where we need to be in terms of getting our fair share back, we've made some pretty good strides there.
Does that does that complete your presentation, Mr. West?
It does, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. We're going to go ahead and take take questions from the council persons. We'll start with the committee members, and I'd like to ask Mr. Richardson if he has any questions.
Yes, I didn't see via on the performance contract contract that I missed. Am I muted?
No, you're they're here.
I thought we're looking.
What did they give this year?
Who is that?
The Vias. It's called something else.
Oh.
Senior. Senior Citizen Services?
Yes, that's them, yeah.
It's Senior Citizen Services.
Oh, okay.
But is that purely via or is that?
That is via. That's totally via.
Okay. Because I didn't know that. Oh, okay. So 1.1 million for college football game. Is that Senior Bowl?
No, sir, that is the Mobile Alabama Bowl, which is the game that has gone from being titled with GMAC to Go Daddy. And I think now it's the Lending Tree Bowl. This is the last year of that seven-year contract extension that was granted in 2013.
Yes, yes, sir.
So that runs through this year.
January 2013, and the last payment is due in November.
Okay. I don't have any issue with that. Excuse me, I also noticed that the expense for the Mobile Metro Jail is up. And I thought we had decreased the population.
We have decreased. Yes, sir, we have decreased our population there. Unfortunately, that contract with the county calls for the city of Mobile to pay 35% of the jail cost, which is is that approximately $10 million that that's budgeted for next year. That's irrespective of our jail population. Seven years ago, we were in the 300-plus range for municipal inmates, and we've been below that consistently ever since. We've been as low as 40 municipal inmates during some periods of time. Sure would be nice if we could get some relief from this contract.
Right.
To this point, we to this point, we've not been able to achieve it, but that is on the list. That's something that we would like to engage with the county on doing. You may remember from previous conversations, we looked at what other what comparable cities pay who have either their own jails or they share a metro jail like we do. Huntsville has the same population we do, actually a little bit more. The city of Huntsville participates in the Madison County Metro Jail and writes a check each year for $2 million as opposed to our 10. Montgomery has a separate city jail, so they don't share expenses with Montgomery County. The total cost of the Montgomery County Jail, and this is a year old, was right under $4 million compared to our 10. Birmingham is not able to give us a number. Their jail is in with their police department, and they do not have the personnel broken out and can't tell us. We've asked them. Tuscaloosa has a metro jail like ours, and the city of Tuscaloosa writes a check each year for 500,000 to Tuscaloosa County.
Wow. Okay. Did I miss anything? What about Gulf Coast Challenge?
Gulf Coast Challenge is not in this budget. We we talked with the sports authority and others who we felt could objectively tell us who was going to play this year. Gulf Coast Challenge, which is tied in with the Southwestern Athletic Conference, is not going to have a game this fall. There is some discussion about whether they may whether the SWAC may play in the spring or whether they won't. If they do, what we intend to do is fashion a budget for that bowl game and bring it back to you.
I would rather for it to stay in, and if they don't use it, we already have it there. Instead of going back, trying to come up with something, I would rather see it in there and let's see what happens. If nothing happens, then the money won't be spent. That's that's my take on that. Plus, it's going to send a ripple effect. It's not native us and citizens all disturbed. I would leave it in there, and if there's no game, we haven't lost. That's that's my feeling on that. Did I understand that we anticipate that the year in the general fund, the year in balance would be 68.8 million?
At 9:30 21, yes, sir.
Okay. All righty, that's.
It's just coincidentally, it's very, very close to what our 9:30 19 ending fund balance was.
Okay. Let me see what else. I see we we're spending about 4.5 million on parks out in the western section. And I didn't see where you were spending a dime on any parks. Easter by 65, I didn't see where a dime was spent on St. Stephen Road. I think we need to come back and take a look at St. Stephen Road. We're trying to revitalize St. Stephen Road, and we keep ignoring it, and we keep sinking money over here and there. I think we need to at least put a million aside for St. Stephen Road in this budget. And that's that's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Richardson. Councilman Williams?
First of all, I'd just like to thank Paul and his staff. Amazing budget. I'm curious if we if the directors or departments are truly going back to zero. Are they, you know, several years ago when we started, we we talked about that, that we're going to kind of make them justify every single dollar. And just just as a matter of, you know, policy, is is that what we're asking them to show us how they how they justify every dollar or is it an increase or decrease over last year?
Well, that's that's a good question, Mr. Williams. And, you know, we don't achieve that every year. We 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 did that in 2014 when we rebudgeted. And if you recall, we actually invited in a number of volunteer CFOs and tax attorneys and CPAs to help the directors do exactly what you suggest, take it back to zero. And although we, you know, we recognize and respect the merit system, we looked at vacancies as not entitlements, but things that would need to be proved up to be filled. And they did a good job with that. To a great extent, there has been an evolution of that learning, and that's passed been passed along. For example, as we are now losing Mark Seeley, who was a disciple of zero-based budgeting, he's passed along that talent and that that commitment to Chief Lamy now. So I can't honestly tell you that we go to zero-based budgeting, but I can tell you that they do pay attention to justifying each of the line items and each of the subdepartments in their in their directorships.
With two additional questions, Mr. Chair, and they'll be short. Really, you said something about Gulf Quest when it was out beside the cruise terminal. Where are you?
You took off with just saying.
That's what they had it under.
It was just listed that way. It's really the it's really the cruise terminal dock improvement. It was just listed as Gulf Quest slash cruise terminal dock improvement.
Right, I just wanted everyone listening to know that that's that's the case. And I thought it was, thank you. The last one, go, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to to make sure that that was a valid question, and Gulf Quest does tie into this. And here's why. The what's called Michael Dow Landing that stretches in front of Cooper and then West and then the terminal, two sections of that have to have to be addressed. And those are in front of Gulf Quest and the terminal. So it doesn't deal with the building at Gulf Quest, but the bulkhead.
Roger, okay. Last one jumped out at me is was it $1 million reduction in the motor pool for police? And I think everybody will kind of raise an eyebrow. Are we going to miss something or is the fleet rejuvenation going to continue despite that?
It will it will continue. I think it has probably was not clear from the presentation. The police budget was reduced by $1 million worth of the monthly rental fees that go into producing the fund out of which motor pool vehicles are replaced. However, Ms. Mallory's budget, the capital budget, contains 2.5 million to help replenish that million and provide a little extra so that some of those vehicle purchases can be front-ended. So the police cycle of replacement of their vehicles will will not be damaged. I'm glad you I'm glad you asked about that because that was unclear from the presentation.
And just a request of you, Paul, and maybe Sean, just to talk about offline about the combo field at Mims Park and just making sure that that we meet the high school requirements for Murphy, who's that's their primary field. But that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mrs. Rich? You're muted, Beth.
There we go. Got it. Thank you. I appreciate everyone who pulled this together. I know how hard it I can only imagine how hard it is. Can we start on the first page in our booklet, that is the general fund budget summary that shows the carryover? And I tried real hard to listen to all the components, but again, could you tell me exactly where this 20 million, since it's, you know, so much compared to former years?
Absolutely. So what the biggest component of the change is the influx of general fund reserve, general fund fund balance into capital. And the mechanism by which we get the money out of general fund reserve and into capital, if we first have to pull the sources of prior year carryforward into the budget, so that $13 million comes in up at the top where it says carryforward. So if you had eliminated that $13 million, really, you'd be about a half a million dollars less than what we were last year. So you pull it in.
You mean the 82, 8.2 million that we did last year as a reserve?
Seven, seven or so. So then, to get it out of the general fund, you'll see it again in transfers out. So your transfers out of the general fund are also significantly higher than they were last year, primarily due to that $13 million coming into the budget and then back out out to capital. So both of those line items will increase by that $13 million.
Okay. And when I get to the capital budget, I'll ask the question there. The other questions I have revolve around, it's a legal total, and it's under the mayor's office. Can someone give me a breakdown of that? What is involved with that? Is that outside legal counsel or is it in-house?
That's the legal.
What page are you on, Beth?
Oh, I'm sorry, page five in our booklet.
Okay.
That is the legal call center, that our internal department.
Okay, so that's not outside legal counsel?
No, 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 that, yeah, no.
Okay, those are, okay.
City attorneys are housed.
Okay, and that's municipal court and whatnot, correct?
The municipal court is right above it.
Right, but I'm saying that the total, though, that's, okay, yeah, all right. So legal are the attorneys that work and their personnel work as in the city of Mobile, that they're not from private firms? How does the city pay for private firms? Where is that coming out of when when we have counsel that we know about that comes out of the mayor's office?
We we pay litigation costs out of the legal liability fund, and it's.
Where is that? And what page is that on? What page is that on?
You will see it coming. Its effect on the general fund is on page 14. It's a transfer out to the liability fund. So that $2.3 million is is inclusive of both litigation, legal expenses, as well as settlement claims.
Okay, and that's under under cost.
It's under transfers.
Oh, transfers, okay.
Almost all the way to the very bottom of the page, that $2.375.
Liability fund, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and that's just budgeting the same as the prior year? Do, okay.
We also have legal expenses in our city hall overhead for non-litigation.
That's another question I was going to ask because that was what I circled that one because it increased, and I thought our rent had gone down in city hall overhead. So that's another that's another revenue stream for legal payments or to firms and.
The legal payments did not change.
The the portion of that call center related to legal did not change year over year. The changes in that call center are related to a couple of things, a portion of which was an estimated change in the government law relief.
And the second portion.
That went down, that went down, right?
It actually it actually is a projection to go up.
I thought they cut that significantly, like to and how long does that good for? Do we know?
Well, that, yes, that that is that is the issue. The the rent went away and the the common area expenses for utilities and the court police and the like was reduced to a negotiated figure during the during the settlement of that issue. But that lease runs out September 30th of this year. So it is exactly the date that our our new budget year starts. So we've anticipated that we will be paying more for occupancy here.
Okay, because you took it from 3.8 to 5.6. So you think it's like over a million, almost, I mean, do you think it'll be that much? What were you paying? What was it before? What was it before? What was it before the settlement?
The rent was about, oh, before the settlement?
Yeah.
No, currently.
Currently, it was $55,000 a month.
Right. But it was significantly higher, but we also got some money back for collecting, correct?
That's what led to the mediation. The fee collection for their sales taxes almost exactly matched the lease and expense requirement for occupancy here. When the county withdrew our agency to collect the sales taxes, of course, we did not have a fund out of which to pay the rent, yet we had an agreement from the county to do that. So that led to mediation. And ultimately, for the remaining two and a half years or so of the lease term, the total that the city paid dropped to $55,000 a month instead of almost $200,000 a month.
My next question is page 12 about public services and maintenance total. That's about $800,000 less than last year. Could you tell me what you moved out? Because I couldn't necessarily follow that. It's the bottom of page 12 and it shows the total is about $800,000 less than the prior year.
Those budgets came from those departments, so we'll have to get back with them and get you an answer on that one.
Okay. Because that's a lot from what we keep hearing about, you know, maintaining things. So that, yes.
Look at what they pay. Look at the actual expenses for 2019.
It was 10.9 and you're budgeting 10.1.
That's the budget for last year, but the actual expenses for 2019 were quite a bit less.
Oh, I see.
They rearranged some of those departments.
Well, that's what I need to, yeah, but it's going back three years.
We'll get you an answer to that.
Yeah, okay. Because I just looked at the last three years. It was, they did bring it up, but we were told we definitely needed it. And so I just wonder why we don't need that, a significant amount budgeted for this year, especially in that. And on the city hall overhead, the only increase is anticipated, there's no other, there's no other revenue that comes out of that except for the rent, the 3.8?
Another increase in overhead is for the municipal election. Next year, there will be additional expenses for that and that's where they're put.
Okay. And that runs about 125K, I think, or maybe it's more. I don't know. But, okay, that's good. That helps me.
Get to the exact number.
Okay. And in the fleet management, there's also a decrease. And I tried to listen when talked about the fleet management, but that's like 200,000 less this year. But you're confident you don't need as robust somebody as?
Actually, the total that will go into the fleet in 2021 will be more than what we have in 2020, by about a million and a half.
Fleet, fleet is, you have fleet and then you have motor pool. So it's, they work together, but they're separate.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. And on page 14, again, is the solid waste authority. That's a pretty significant increase. Do we know why? Oh, wait a minute. That's the, never mind.
Solid waste authority.
No, no, no. I take that back. That was the pension, the firefighters, and I knew that that's, yeah, okay. Never mind on that one. Okay. I think I've got just about everything. And the Gulf, okay, the Gulf Quest, we, have they, I know there's, they obviously have issues with having people through there, but they were supposed to have a robust campaign to help pay down some of the debt service. Do we know if they participated or are communicating with the administration about their initiative? That was part of the agreement when the city took over the operations?
Let me tell you what I know. You're talking about the foundation.
Yes.
That is a private foundation. They did pay, you know, the city's engagement was a condition on them raising half a million dollars to pay down that debt to the nine local banks. They did raise that $500,000. They did pay, do you remember the new market tax credits? There was one federal and one state. And one of those matured earlier this year. They paid it off. So they paid all of the interest to that point. There's a new market tax credit that will be paid off early next year, and they still have amounts owing on that. And they still have ongoing interest on the declining balance of the bank debt. So their obligations are much less than what they were, but they're never the less there. And we're really, we don't have an eye into exactly, you know, what else they're doing in the way of fundraising.
And I know it's a difficult climate. On page seven, though, we move from 400,000 to 1.4 million for their operations. And so can someone explain that to me?
I think the problem in 2019 was the people were not in that budget, some of the people.
Oh, that's right.
So a million more came in to work there? I mean, and not a million more people, but a million dollars needed to operate?
We do have some revenues coming in for their charges for services, their ticket sales and membership revenues, although not nearly enough to offset their expenses, but it does to some extent.
Their total expenses, as you may recall, were going to be about a million a year, about half of that in salaries and benefits and half of that in utilities and maintenance. The extra 400,000 is the city's $400,000 principal payment each year on that obligation. Doesn't that come from that?
That's under debt service, though, the 400,000.
Oh, is it in capital?
Yeah.
Then I'm mistaken and we're going to have to get you the answer to that.
Well, if you net the revenues back against it, I'd have to look and see what the bottom line works out to be. I know the revenues this year are projected to take a steep decline from what they were budgeted for 2020. For obvious reasons, they don't, for COVID, they, what membership and visitors they had, they don't now, especially with the cruise terminal not being there. That was, it aided them to have people driving into the museum, but now they've kind of got a double whammy, no cruise terminal and COVID. But to some extent, their revenues do offset it. I'd have, we'd have to net it and get you what the total change is. But I know last year, I think with their revenues, just by eyeballing it, it would get them back down to about a million dollars.
Oh, what they bought in, you mean?
Yes.
Okay. But the 400,000, that's the increase from, well, it's a million actually, is not the 400,000 that comes on a different page for their, it says Gulf Quest debt service and it says 400,000. And that was part of the agreement.
Correct. Is that correct?
Yeah. But that's not added into that. Okay. I just want, I'm not, okay, I just want to try to get it as straight as I can. Okay, I'd appreciate some, you know, some more in-depth on that. Okay. I guess, and I might, I'll reserve that I might have more questions because I just got your slides, which I really appreciate, and that helps me drive back and forth to the budget book. So, but I know there might be other questions, so I don't want to tie up everybody's time right this second. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Mr. White. I'm beating with the council and everything. I know one, which had answered some of my questions, but I just have a few, just a few. At the mayor, going back to the general fund, page one, the increase of his budget from 6.7 to 7.4, I mean, is this like new employees? I mean, raises or what? Another question also was the city clerk and council. I see that we had dropped from 87,000, you know, to a straight even of 2.0. Was wondering, you know, why is that? Also, I was looking at the public service, not public service, excuse me, the public safety, that we went up on 2 million, you know, exactly, I might have missed it, but why did it actually went up for 2 million dollars? And could you also explain the transfer?
CJ, don't go so fast. Let her...
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You need to let him answer some of this.
The public safety is the easiest to answer. As Paul mentioned, there is a 2.5% salary increase for all employees, which would account for a significant amount of that increase in public safety year over year. For the mayor and council, I'm not sure. We may have to get that information and get back to you.
The mayor's office is actually less, isn't it?
Well, the mayor's office, it encompasses the mayor's office, municipal court, legal and communications. So some of that is communication.
Yeah.
Could we get a breakdown in that, if possible?
Yes.
Okay. And also the city clerk and council.
Right.
And one, two other things, too, because not really understanding the transfers out. I see that in 2017, we was at 21, then in 2018, we dropped down to 17, 19, to that to 19, 20, we're at 17 now, 21 proposed is 32. I mean, can you explain what is, I just, I can't get a good understanding of that?
The transfers out of the general fund, that $13 million that we're moving out of the general fund and into capital to do projects with, that is in that $32 million number. So that transfer out, if you take out that 13.2 million dollars.
It would be about 19.
It'd be about 19. So it's much more comparable to what the prior year number was. The difference in the way we're handling that, a couple of years ago, we did that, what was it, 10 million? 10 million transfer out of the general fund. That was done with a separate budget amendment, but you didn't see that in the adopted budget numbers. So the fact that we have pulled that $13 million into this budget really skews a couple of numbers in the budget. It makes your carryforward look like it's much higher and it makes your transfers out of the general fund and into capital much higher. And the capital budget is also similarly much higher as well. It's a mechanism really to get fund balance out of the general fund and into capital.
Okay, okay, okay. One last question. I see that the senior bowl went up to about 72. Is this something that they asked for or what? I mean, I know they anticipated moving this year, so it costing the city more to move out or, I mean, why was the addition of 72 for senior bowl? Does anybody know?
Yes. The senior bowl is staying in place from what we understand. The difference is that with the number of colleges that are not playing football this year, you know, we've had two of the big five conferences drop football and we've had some of the mid-Atlantic or the mid-American, I'm sorry, the group of five drop football. There are many seniors who will not have a chance to play during the year. So the NFL is asking that the senior bowl, and this isn't definite yet, they are asking that the senior bowl possibly expand the number of days that all of them will be in Mobile so that there can be more practice days and more college players who coaches get a look at.
How many more days are they looking at? Do you know?
They're not sure yet, but you can imagine that the normal number of seniors that get invited will go up substantially because some of them just will not have been seen before. And so this will be the only place, really, that those players get to show off and shine. So I would imagine at least a multiple of days.
It goes right into the hotels.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm figuring, so we're expecting more players this year.
Expecting more players, but also expecting the coaches and the assistant coaches to be here for a longer period of time.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I know that Mr. Williams had a follow-up question.
And this ties into what Fred talked about and interesting that right straight into what CJ just said. I want to make sure that I'm clear. I'm the chairman of the Mobile Sports Authority and you're a representative on that board. As I understand it, the 2020 budget would not have changed for the Mobile Sports Authority. And that is, in a sense, the Gulf Coast Challenge. And I know that name has changed several times, but that is the HBCU football game. While it will be played in the fall, there is a plan for it to be moved into the spring and we hope that the pass-through of $36,000 as well as an events fund of $65,000, just, you know, quick math, $100,000 there, plus 152 allocated in last year's budget, it was put into last year's budget, as well as $125,000 from the county, that that football game is secure. I will continue to monitor this as chairman of the Mobile Sports Authority, but it is, there is no danger of that football game having an opportunity to play and not playing because it's not funded. It'll be more than that.
We are going, we are going to look to you for the lead on monitoring how that looks to be in the future, you know, if that in fact happens. We're not going to let that game go.
We were in contact as late as last week with Mr. Ball, so there's, that thing is very fluid, but as Paul said, is absolutely true that it was not, it wasn't any decision made on part of the Mobile Sports Authority or the city that that game wasn't played. It was simply that the conference didn't, decided not to play football this fall. I'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Richardson, anything else?
Yes. I want to join Councilman Small on this city council budget. Two positions, it was cut by two positions without knowledge. I want to know what's going on. We need help, not, we don't need anybody taking help from us. We need help, so I want to know what's going on.
Mr. Richardson, there are no people who, there are no numbers of heads, so to speak, in that office that have been cut. There were vacancies removed from all of our departments to get our budget in line, but, you know, nobody lost an employee.
Well, vacancies removed is the same thing as cut. I mean, you're just using a different word. If you remove my arm, I'll cut it off. I believe my arm is gone. So you're just using a different term to say the same thing. You did, you cut it, but you're calling it remove, removed it. My point is, the city clerk's office, they applied for the positions and they started begging for the position. You all knew you had removed. You all knew you had removed it, hadn't said anything, they waited every day, hoping to get the person. Lo and behold, the person's been cut out the butt without any of our knowledge. So are they back in? Are the two positions back in as I'm now?
No, sir.
Do you have any plan of putting them back in?
We need some help on this from Paul.
No, we do not. Um, each of the vacancies that was removed, and there were lots of vacancies removed, those were positions that were never filled, um, they do not have names on them. Um, they they were removed, but your count, that is, the number of employees, has not been reduced.
No, that's because we have a, um, we we have a council aid position, I guess it was left. And I guess if we had our druthers, we'd, uh, give up the council aid position, take the secretary two back. Just looking for your help on this one, Paul.
Well, well, uh, Chairman Davis, I'll let, I'll let this go, we're gonna give the city clerk's office, seems like to me this is gonna be a matter that the council gonna have to resolve. We're gonna have to put him, put the money back in order for them to hire the position, you know? They've already said, they don't, the money's not there, they they're not planning to put it back. And it's gonna be up to us to handle that, we'll take care of it.
Well, okay. Um, Ms. Rich, did you have anything else?
Yes, ac- actually, I do, and it's on the page seventeen. If you'll look at the Civic Center sees an increase of three hundred K and the Sanger Theater. So did there, what changed there? Is there a management agreement change? Will that be coming to council? Because, um, I don't, I haven't heard about that, and just curious why is such large increases?
So, uh, the way those, uh, those venues are funded is through the city making up the deficit that exists between, uh, the costs of running, uh, the theater and the civic center against the revenue. Um, we anticipate, uh, pretty good decreases in revenue for 2021. And while SMG, the manager, has, uh, instituted some furloughs and other cost savings, we're not going to be able to make up all the lost revenue. So the increase in the transfer to keep those, uh, those venues running, uh, is is what you're seeing there.
Okay, I I know that's true about the Civic Center, but I I thought there was a cap on, um, with SMG for the Sanger, and that was the beauty of that contract, that they weren't to come to us. And I don't know whether, you know, you have a pandemic, whether all bets are off or what, but I I thought that had a a pretty good, um, scenario for the city so that we weren't just constantly paying out for venues that weren't happening to keep employees that didn't actually work for the city of Mobile.
They actually did, Ms. Rich, you're you're right, your memory is correct. Um, this, before we hired SMG, we were losing, um, a half a million dollars or so on on those operations. And the way the contract works is the less money we lose, the greater the fee to SMG. But for 2021, we know that is, uh, that that world is gonna change, and they will not be able to make up, uh, or improve the the losses that were received. So we're gonna have to put more money in, but the contract is the old contract, it's it's intact on the, uh, the same, uh, you know, the same math that that we've had for the last five years.
And that's for the Sanger, even though we're we're gonna be spending that much more this go, this year or anticipated. I I really thought we had protection, and it was different than the contract that the Civic Sen- Center and the Convention Center, you know, that that they were different, we we weren't paying out to keep it closed, so to speak. They only got their fees when they, for the Sanger, I mean, it it was really a very nice contract for the, on behalf of the citizens, because we weren't stuck with having to pay if there was nothing going on.
Uh, it doesn't exactly work that way, there there was a, uh, a nice incentive to them uh, for, uh, us losing less, less money each year. And it worked until, uh, they could not attract the, uh, you know, the audiences to to, uh, to events during COVID. We can send you that contract if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess I I, that's what I'll need to just kind of review it, cuz I really thought there was a cap, and it it wasn't as significant as what you're budgeting. So that'd be great, thank you. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Small, did you have any additional questions?
No, good, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wesh, anything from your team before we close it down?
Uh, Chairman Davis, I, again, would just like to, uh, to thank you and, uh, council members present uh, for weighing in and and being here and and, uh, sharing information. And, uh, we certainly anticipate not only answering these questions that are left over that we we need to supply additional information for, but we anticipate written questions, you know, council members and and from from those present today, too, as you get, uh, a a better opportunity to review the budget.
Great, and again, I'd join my colleagues in thanking you and your staff for your work in, uh, putting together this budget and for the time you've voted to, uh, be in here with us today and answering our questions. And I know you'll be available, uh, as we move through this process to answer any additional questions we may have. Uh, do we have a motion?
Some move.
I'm taking that muted comment by Mr. Williams for a second.
Yes, that's.
We'll stay in the jargon, thank you, everybody.
Good meeting, thank you.